All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. There's been a, has there been a declaration of public notice? Thank you. The, uh, sorry, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to welcome you to our, the annual meeting and budget hearing of Monona Grove School District. Before we proceed, I'd like to make some introductions. We have board members on our left, Susan Fox, my left, Susan Fox, Susan Manning, Dean Bowles, and Andrew McKinney, one of our new board members this year. On my right is Jared Rosing, our Director of Business Services, Dan Olson, the Superintendent, and Mike Jolka, who's going to serve tonight as our parliamentarian for the meeting, if there's any questions about proper procedure. And most importantly, I'd like to introduce Joyce, sitting behind you, because she's administrative assistant here, and she's going to be taking notes and keep me out of trouble, hopefully. I would like to note, on the inside, if you have the, the meeting booklet, on the inside first page, there's rules of order. I'd like to note that only district residents can make, only district residents can make motions and seconds and vote. Time limit for speakers is limited to three minutes per person. No speaker may speak again until all have spoken, and no speaker may speak more than twice on any given motion. That said, the first order of business is to elect a chairperson for the meeting. Oh, and I need to introduce myself, I'm Peter Sobel, President of the School Board. First order of business is to elect a chairperson for this meeting. Are there, and I, for that, I need nominations for chairpersons. Dean?
I'll nominate Peter Sobel.
Okay, are there any additional nominations? Okay, the nominations are closed. All in favor of me, (laugh) chairing this meeting, proceeding as chair of this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item D, announcement of the availability of the minutes. The minutes of our last meeting, since this meeting only happens once a year, minutes carry over from last year's annual meeting to this year, and I need to make an announcement that they're available back on the table over there, right? Or with, yes?
Exactly.
Oh, in the book, on page nine. If I just read what Joyce wrote for me, we would be all set here. The next item of business is a superintendent's report, and Dan Olson will provide that.
I'd like to provide a brief report tonight, and start by talking about some of the key things that are happening in the school district. When you came in this evening, one of the handouts is our annual report, and that a number of these items are in a little bit more detail in there, but I'd like to just highlight a couple of those key things that are new in the district in this past school year and upcoming. So, first of all, you may have read in the media, as well as some of the information we have pushed out, is that the district has been awarded Department of Justice Safety Grant. Every school district in the state of Wisconsin was eligible for this grant, and our, we received approximately $150,000. And this grant was actually quite limited, it was to be used specifically, or primarily for building improvements for safety and so on. And so, three of the things that we, excuse me, two of the things that we were able to do with that is upgrade some of our security cameras, it actually paid for the entire upgrade in two of our buildings, as well as improvement with the safety glass at our entrances. So, certainly, anytime we get grant money, it's welcome addition to help offset some of our expenditures that we normally have to do in our operating costs. Secondly, we received a grant with, from our MG-21 charter school, an expansion grant. MG-21 has been a high school charter school since 2010 in the district. It's really been a state leader in project-based learning, as well as restorative practices, and the school applied for an expansion grant in order to expand to include grades six through eight. We're thrilled that we received that grant of just over $500,000. Now, that money can be spent over the next five years, primarily for planning, a lot of that money, or most of it goes towards curriculum planning and staff development, but some of it can be used for some physical improvements into the school as well that are needed to make that expansion. So, again, another very positive thing, we're really excited about providing that expanded opportunity to our middle school age students. Innovation exploration, and something, when we look at our curriculum and structure, we're always trying to promote the idea of innovation with our teachers, and we have a number of teacher-led innovations. Sometimes they start as pilot programs, others it's, it works off of our normal, you know, programming that we have. And one that I'd like to highlight in particular is one that's occurring at Winnequa School, where we have a number of staff members that are involved with coding and computational technology. And what's so exciting about this innovation is a team approach of a number of staff members, and it's really the idea of coding to increase our problem-solving in math, you know, mathematical analysis, and really improving student engagement. And so, it's something that, again, our team is working on, that we're really excited that complements our core instruction in mathematics and the sciences. And then, next, I'd like to talk about, a little bit about the upcoming referendum. We're going to have an opportunity, we have a number of community forums, we'll go in great detail, but tonight I'd like to just give you an overview of the specifics. There've been a number of mailings that have gone out to our district residents, and so you probably have been informed of most of the basics, but I'd like to just highlight some of those key pieces, you know, this evening. So, really, the referendum, when we look at our facilities challenges, we're really focusing on three key challenges. One is our student enrollment growth. Secondly, is some of our deferred maintenance items, and then, third, some additional safety and security upgrades, you know, for our buildings. And so, to talk just briefly about our growth, again, this chart is, it kind of gives you the big picture. Over the last 10 years, we have seen student enrollment growth of just over 500 students, project as many as another 700-plus students over the next 10 years. But most importantly, when we look at our planning, we're planning for our resident student growth. We do have a number of open enrollment students, we can control that, the number of students, and accommodate when we have space needs, that we can reduce those numbers, but the most important thing is that we have to have space for our resident students, and that's what all the planning has been based upon moving forward. With our current enrollment projections, we anticipate that as many as three of our schools be in overcapacity within the next five years. And the three schools are the ones that are located in Cottage Grove, in 4K through eight, Taylor Prairie, Cottage Grove School, and then Glacial Drummond School. Winnequa has seen some enrollment growth, but we also anticipate that any future growth that we have, we'll be able to accommodate space in that building. Likewise, with the high school, we anticipate at least 10 years before we start looking at capacity, could be longer. The longer we go out in enrollment projections, of course, the less reliable that data is, there's a lot of variables that can happen, but in the short term, we're really in a good place in those two buildings, but we're really, you know, very near at, or potentially over in those other three. And that's really what's driven the study and recommendations with regard to enrollment. Second item, the capital maintenance, and this chart just shows the breakdown by building of deferred maintenance needs. You see, buying, by large, the largest amount of work that is needed is at Winnequa School. For the district, we have just over $14 million of deferred maintenance projects, and over $8 million of those are at Winnequa School. Now, Winnequa was built in 1963, and so, there, at this point, we're ready for upgrades in plumbing, HVAC, roofs, windows, all those, there's certainly been some updates over the years, but some of that is really the original work that was done back in '63. The galvanized piping, for example, you know, now at 50-plus years old, needs to be replaced, and it's the original windows. And so, it doesn't take long to get to, you know, that large figure when we're looking at those major renovations or maintenance upgrades in that building. And then, the other buildings all have some work that needs to be done, but certainly not as much of a major work as at Winnequa School. Okay? And then, just briefly into the planning process that led to the recommendation for referendum. The study really began back in 2015, started with an enrollment study, as well as facility study, and then, from, in 2017, we put a committee together, an advisory committee, to look at all of that data, and really, from there, you know, make recommendations and leading to where we're at today. So, that committee was made up of community members, 20 community members from both Monona and Cottage Grove. As I mentioned, they looked at the data, they met for over a 10-month period in doing that analysis, and, again, looked at the data, visited buildings, and so on, and ultimately came up with a preliminary recommendation in February. Now, that preliminary recommendation, okay, identified about $87 million worth of building needs in the district. And so, at that point, we went out to, to community to get feedback on those preliminary recommendations. And so, there was a survey done in the spring, the purpose of that survey was to really test those recommendations and determine what are the priorities in the community, as well as the priorities for what the community would support in a financial, you know, way. And so, when that survey came back, the committee then revised their recommendations based upon the results. And the survey did indicate that there was support to pursue a referendum, but with that, that the priorities had to be, you know, first of all, to accommodate growth, a new elementary school, and then, capital maintenance and safety and security. And that some of the other renovations weren't nearly as high priority, as well as, you know, some of the athletic things that were potential projects. Okay, so, the proposed solution, that came from that original list of $87 million, actually was a recommendation for $57 million in facilities. And that $57 million, again, represents the highest priority needs, the things that I've already identified, and with that, then, on the referendum, there'll actually be two questions, okay? And the first is asking the voters to authorize the board to borrow $57 million, basically issue bonds in order to do the facilities work. Typically, those bonds are issued over a 20-year period, very similar to a home mortgage, it kind of works the same way, and so, the referendum is asking for the authority for the board to do that borrowing to, to facilitate the work done on those projects. The second question is an operational question. Anytime that you bring a new school online, there's additional operational costs. So, for that school specifically, utility costs, and then there's staffing, building the ground staff, some administrative staff, and so on. And so, the second question is asking for the authority to increase the revenue, basically from the general operating budget, by about $930,000 per year, not about, exactly $930,000. That's a recurring question, so it would be really given the, we have revenue limits in place, Jared Rosing will speak to that more in his budget report coming up, but it's really asking for the authority to increase by that amount in order to operate that school. Okay, this slide shows a little bit different breakdown of the cost by building. Again, the new school would be the projected cost of a little bit over $33 million. If you look at the other individual items, I think I mentioned that in Winnequa, the capital maintenance was just over $8 million, and you see on this slide, the total renovations would be just over $10 million, so that additional $2 million actually is for some renovations to learning space. So, it's not just the capital maintenance, but it's things like, for example, the library. It's the orig, some of the original structure in the library, it included some rooms attached to that that were used as computer labs, they're no longer necessary since we're now everything is wireless, and so, some renovations to some learning spaces. And likewise, in some of the other buildings. So, that's, again, one of the areas that was really scaled back from the original proposal. Originally, we had identified nearly $20 million of classroom-type renovations, and this actually includes just over $7 million across all the buildings in the district. And then, finally, what would the grade alignment look like under this, you know, proposal? If we brought a new school online in Cottage Grove for grades three through five, the idea behind that is that would now align all of our schools so that students in grades K through five, or 4K through five, would be in an elementary setting. Right now, in our current configuration, our fifth graders who reside in Cottage Grove actually attend Glacial Drummond School with the middle schoolers, and so, this plan would alleviate the space issues, it would allow for future growth, as well as align all of our elementary schools at 4K through five. And then, perhaps most importantly, okay, what's the tax impact? And so, for the first question, for the facilities, the tax impact on $57 million of bonds would have an estimated impact of an increase of $29 per $100,000 of fair market value for the homeowner. Now, that number represents the anticipated maximum would be in any given year. There'll be fluctuations over time, but that would be the highest amount. Then, for larger value, you know, you can do the math, for $200,000, of course, it would be double that at $58, and so on. Now, the second question, the operational, to increase the annual operating budget by that $930,000, would be an additional $46 per $100,000 of value. So, together, the total would be $75 per $100,000. Now, by doing some simple math, you might wonder, well, how can the first one have a lesser impact than the second one? The first one takes into account some debt that is falling off. So, our high school is just coming up on 20 years old, the debt will be paid off on that next year, and so, the $29 represents an increase over our current level of, of the taxation for our debt. And so, that's a lower number, and then the additional on the operating. Again, I know Jared will go into a little bit more detail on, on the debt service and so on in his report. Okay, and then, finally, the timeline. If this referendum were approved in November, is about a three-year period before all the work would be complete. Basically, about a year to actually do the design work for not only the new school, but for the renovations and so on, and then, looking ahead at the end of that time, a three-month period for doing all the bidding, and then, construction starting in that following summer. And so, the fall of 2021 is when the projects would be completed. And then, that plays into a little bit the question of why now? Okay, why this timeline? There's really a couple reasons for that. One is, as I mentioned already, with some of the debt falling off, okay, it would lessen the tax impact by doing it at the time that that debt falls off. Secondly, we know that the growth is coming, and so, knowing that it takes three years to complete this, we'd have the space available before we get in a situation where we're overcapacity for several years and have to, you know, make adjustments with learning spaces that way. And then, you know, lastly, again, it's really the idea that we believe this is, you know, the committee forth a responsible plan, you know, with that timeline, to deal with the situations that we have now. The deferred maintenance, obviously, every year longer that we wait to take care of those issues, you know, compounds the challenges, you know, that we face. Okay, again, that was a very brief overview. We have our community presentations, it'll be a lot more detail, and there will be additional opportunities. We have a couple of open houses coming up next week, one at Winnequa School on, on Monday, and at Cottage Grove School next Tuesday. We also have, you know, have, we'll have some additional literature that is mailed home, we have information on the website, we'll have, you know, e-newsletters, and so, there's a number of ways we can get information. And tonight as well, we can take some questions from the folks that are here, but I don't want to go through a real lengthy presentation, I want to focus on the questions that you might have this evening, and can be glad to go into any detail on things that we went through, you know, really quickly. So, with that, I would take, be glad to take any questions from the folks that are here this evening. Yes, sir?
To show the second item for increased, operational costs.
Yep.
That would only be assessed once the school is built.
It would be, the question on the referendum would be phrased, it would not be assessed this first year, the board would have the authority to start assessing in the second year, and that would be the, as far as the determination of how much, there might be some things prior to the school being completed that would need to be brought online, but to be clear, the authority to increase that levy would begin in the second year. Okay? Yes?
Regarding question two, using that strategy, why don't, why don't we have an operational or recurring referendum for Winnequa, for Cottage Grove? Isn't this a bit language, a bit shenanigan? You know, we'd still be paying for the principal at Winnequa, you know, since 1965.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you just, you know, you have three years before the new school comes online, why don't you just use those three years? You need to increase the taxes to the normal amount that do it, otherwise, use the three years, you know, you have six buildings.
Mm-hmm.
To reduce a little expense and save, you know, 900,000 divided by six buildings is 130,000.
Yeah.
A building, I'm guessing that any person here could easily find 150,000 savings in each of them.
Yeah, great question. So, the reason is that school districts have revenue limits, and so, you mentioned, couldn't we just, through the normal purposes, raise taxes, unless, you know, the necessary amount? And the answer is no, the board doesn't have the authority to increase. And Jared will talk about the specifics of that in his report about how the revenue limits work, but revenue limits were put in place in 1993. So, prior to that, when Winnequa School was built, for instance, in 1963, the board at that time did have the authority to levy whatever tax was required to operate the school. This, since 1993, school boards have not had the authority to levy whatever they felt or the constituency felt was necessary. There are limits put in place under, you know, state formulas, and now, since that time, now, boards have to actually go to referendum to authority to increase those, what those revenue limits are. And so, that's why we have operational questions. Before 1993, there weren't operational referendums.
Following up on that, so, is there, was there an operational for the high school and Glacial Drummond School after 1993?
Again, I'll let Jared answer specifics on that when he gets up on his budget report, but I'm familiar that in Glacial Drummond, the answer was yes. Okay, there was an operational question along with the facilities part, okay? And I don't want to quote a number that it may not be accurate, but we can certainly get that information. I'm not sure about, you know, the high school. Yeah, there was not.
I've got one other question. Could you go back to slide 15, where it says the, assess the capacity of the, of the various schools?
Sure.
Okay, right, it was 13. Now, if, if this referendum is passed, and I agree with the first referendum, how will those numbers change? Taylor will go from 1920 to what, and Glacial will go from what?
Yeah.
And since Cottage Grove is being downsized, what will that?
Yeah, great question. I think to help answer, I'm going to go to the slide that shows the proposed grade configuration.
That was very nice.
Okay, if you look at this, right now, Taylor Prairie, on the left side, the existing is 4K through one. Okay, under, with the new school is placed, Taylor Prairie goes to 4K and K. Cottage Grove School is currently two through four with three grades, the new proposal would be grades one through two. So, essentially, you're taking one grade out of each of those buildings, likewise with Glacial Drummond. So, that's what accommodates for the additional space in those buildings for future growth, and then, of course, the new school as well, I didn't mention, it would be built with an initial capacity of just over 600, which would allow for future growth with the idea that the common spaces would be large enough as well that there could be additional capacity added in the future. So, that's how it accommodates the future growth, growth moving forward?
But, I didn't really get an answer.
Okay.
Now, again, going back to slide 15.
Okay.
Can you, can you give new estimates if we pass the referendum?
Oh, as far as, okay, I'm sorry, at what point would they reach?
Yeah, at what point would Cottage Grove, what point would Taylor, what point?
Got it. Okay.
You know, just estimates.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to preface that, as you mentioned, when we do our facility study, okay, we had the original one in 2015, it's been updated, the projections go out 20 years. Within the first five years, they're quite, you know, accurate, further out, they become less, and we have a low and a high range. And so, but based upon those projections over the next 20 years, that would, those would not reach your capacity for at least that next 20 years.
So, so, for the next 20 years, based on current estimates, Taylor, Glacial, and Cottage Grove would not go over capacity? And likewise, Winnequa, say, for 20 years?
Yes.
Okay, and the high school, we might have an issue?
We're going to start, look, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Did that answer?
Okay. Okay. And again, we're going to have a detailed budget report, so any of this that's related to the budget, we can certainly come back to as well in that part. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next item of business is the financial report and the auditor statement. The treasurer's report can be found on page 1112, pages 11 and 12 of the meeting booklet. Each year, we are audited by our CPAs, by Wegner CPA. We received that report in February, so we'll receive a, a next audit in February 2019, and that is, that audit is available to the public. Each year, as, along as I've been in the board, we have received a clean audit report. And thanks to the man who's up next, mostly, Jared, our Director of Business Services, who is going to conduct the budget hearing.
All right, good evening, and as Peter had mentioned, my name is Jared Rosing, and I'm the Director of Business Services with the school district. And we are moving into the budget hearing portion of the annual meeting tonight. I do want to point out that in the packet that we had referenced before, the budget information actually starts on page 13. There's a, a lot of information in here, and we can actually sit and talk for, about school finance for probably two, three, four hours if we wanted to. However, this, the portion of this meeting, the purpose of this meeting is to introduce the budget to the community. The fiscal year of the school district actually starts July 1 and runs through June 30. So, the board actually has approved a preliminary budget by the end of June for this upcoming year, and per state statute, that's the reason our fiscal year runs, is that June to, or July from, to June. And, but we don't really even, tonight, have all of our final numbers. And I say that, and that's just the way school finance works in the state of Wisconsin, unfortunately. A lot of our numbers that are driven from are enrollments, and they have a Third Friday count, which actually was on September 21st. So, you might say, well, that was a couple weeks ago, so why don't you have the final numbers? Well, there's a lot of reconciliation that needs to happen. When we talk about enrollment, we're not only talking about our students that are physically attending here, but we also have to ensure that those students that have opened enrolled out of our district, or have moved, that we track those down, and then we submit that official report to DPI. Then DPI turns around and gives us a calculation on FTE. So, when we talk about enrollment, a lot of times, when we talk about referendum, we're talking about physical kids in the, in the buildings. When we talk about revenue, we're talking about FTE, and FTE is a little different. So, kids that are in grades kindergarten through 12, they're counted as a full-time student, that's a one. However, our 4K students that only attend a half a day are only counted at a .6. So, you might see some numbers floating around there, that we have 3,257 students, but when you see an FTE report, it's only a 3,199. So, that's just a quick overview of what happens there. So, we're going to start out and just talk a little bit. We have six municipalities that actually make up our school districts, and those six municipalities is what drives our valuation. The valuation numbers are supposed to come out on October 1st, and we just received them this morning, so we're still continuing to use off of estimates. So, that you can see here the percentages, and so, from top to bottom, the highest percentage of property value is at the city of Monona, all the way down to the city of Madison. Right now, we are anticipating, on the bottom of the screen, 2018-19, that's the valuation that we're currently using as we move into that. And why is that important for tonight is the valuation is actually what helps determine what the mill rate is. So, a lot of times, you might hear publications or individuals talk about, well, the school district's mill rate is this amount, and we're compared to other schools at this level. And all that that is doing is it's saying that we have a valuation, and we're taking our total levy and dividing it out by the mill rate, or by the valuation. Right now, our estimate is at a 4.11% increase over the previous year, and the part of that is, is there is a TID district that is actually closing in the city of Monona, and so, that valuation is coming on. For the last couple of years, we've seen a valuation increase of just shy of, between that 2.5 to 3.25 percent. And you can see in this graph that we have pretty much stayed, I'm pretty consistent there. Back in 2014, we saw, to 2015, we saw an increase, but over the last three years, we pretty much stayed status quo with that 2.5 to 3.25 percent. The other thing that we ought to make sure that we take into account is the valuation is that, part of the formula that I'll talk about a little bit later in the budget hearing is equalization aid. So, part of the equalization aid takes into the state looking at the formula saying that as a school district, we're going to take your valuation and divide it out by the number of students that are attending, resident students that are attending. If you are considered a property-rich school district per membership of your school, then you're going to receive less aid from the state, because they believe that our taxpayers can make up the rest of the money. So, that's when, when we talk about equalization aid, that's where I will be referring to. But as we start into the 2018-19 budgets, we do have a budgeting process that actually starts back in January. Administration works with buildings, and we start looking what our staffing needs are. In addition to that, we've now been into our third year of using a zero-based budgeting process. And what that means is that not every school is guaranteed that And what that means is that not every school is guaranteed that same dollar amount, or even departments receive the same dollar amount. We pretty much start at zero, and we look at what the needs are. And each year, the needs are going to be a little different, and we need to make sure that we're focusing on our strategic plan, the needs of our students, and also predicting what some of those needs might look like for new students moving in. One of the things that, you know, can be challenging is, is that we are also predicting what type of students potentially are coming into our district. If we have students that have IEPs or in special education that require a one-on-one aid, and they move into our district, we not, we might not have been planning for that, but those are things that we have to, by state law, provide those services for those students. Back in April of two thousand and sixteen, the district passed a two-point-six million-dollar operational referendum. And actually, the details of how that operational referendum is being spent is on page sixteen of the packet. In addition to that, it's also on the district's website for future reference, if you would like. The district was awarded to DOJ, DOJ, or Department of Justice Safety Grants. Superintendent Olson did mention that we were, we received a hundred and fifty thousand, but we just recently learned that we were approved for the second round, which was additional hundred and ninety thousand dollars for safety grants. So we've been able to incorporate that. The other part, we saw no increase in our revenue limits on the per pupil amounts. However, on the per pupil aid, we've seen an increase of two hundred and four dollars per student's over the previous year. We are moving into the, the budget year with a balanced budget, and tonight we will be proposing a total tax levy of twenty-eight million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And that will make up funds from general fund, which is our general education fund, our debt service fund thirty-eight and thirty-nine, as well as our fund eighty. So as we move into explaining a little bit of having that foundation of how pu- public school funding works, and the majority of our funds come through, district revenues are obtained through two sources, equalization aid and property taxes. And it's very important to understand that these are counterbalancing forces. And I say that because, yeah, we will talk a little bit about revenue limits. As Superintendent Olson mentioned, we are given a revenue limits that tells us that you can take your resident students multiplied by a base dollar amount, and that's the total that you can collect from your property taxpayers. Then the state in October will come and tell us how much aid we will, we will be receiving. We subtract that away, and then whatever's remaining is what's shared with our local property taxpayers. So if one year, we see an increase in state aid, we will see a decrease in property taxes. If we receive less aid from the state, then property taxes will increase. And then as we talked about revenue limits, Dan had mentioned that back in nineteen ninety-three, these were established, and it was primarily set to control property taxes. And so it's really talking about the maximum amount of revenue that a school district may raise through state aid and property tax levy. And this year, like I had said, we are not seeing any increase in the per student, per resident student's amounts, and it will change based on enrollments, debts, and state aid. This graph here shows you a little bit about how that per pupil amounts works in the revenue limits. So you can see back in two thousand and ten, eleven, our base amount was eleven thousand ten dollars per resident student's. So we would take that resident student's times the eleven thousand ten dollars, and that was our base amount that we could spread between equalization aid and property taxes. Then we had a reduction of a five point five percent that was given to every school district across the state of Wisconsin, and that brought us down to that ten thousand four hundred and four dollars. And then you can see that since two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, we have pretty much stayed flat. You'll see there's a fluctuation of ten dollars or so, and that's because of how the debt schedule works in, and it's a shared cost. But we're technically not receiving, like we've saw in the past, a two hundred dollars or two hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil increase. That was part of the reason that we also asked for the operational referendum. As you can see, we saw a tremendous decrease in the amount of revenue that we were able to collect. And then as we move on to equalization and per pupil aid, so as we talk about that equalization aid side of things, and we talk about the valuation and being a property rich, so Manona Grove is considered in the state of Wisconsin eyes a property-rich school district because the nu- the amount of property value that comes along with each of our resident students that are enrolled into our district is higher than many, many school districts in the state of Wisconsin. And what that does is it takes state aid away from the district, which really drives up our mill rates. And so as we work through the state budgets, we are seeing this year a projection of a three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar increase in equalization aid. Something that's also been new within the last two state budgets is something that's called per pupil aid. And you can see that back in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen is when that was first created, and that was two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil, and then we saw that increase. So this year, we're seeing that two hundred and four dollar per pupil increase over two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. So it's six hundred and fifty-four dollars per resident pupil. And this is just a quick glance of what that historical value of, view of our equalization aid has been. You can see that back in two thousand and ten, eleven, we had a small dip through two thousand twelve, fourteen, thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and then we're slowly climbing back up, which does alleviate some of the burden that's passed along to our property taxpayers. So this is the fund breakdown. So there are a number of funds that the district is required to do accounting, pretty much DPI or the Department of Public Instruction mandates us on how we record things. There's not a lot of flexibility from the district side of things. I'm not going to walk through all these, but I just want to point out that Fund Ten is where our general funds are, so that's all of many of, all the operations that happens in the district. Fund Twenty-seven is where we have to record expenses that are record, associated with special education. But when we talk about setting the tax levy tonight, we're going to talk about Fund Ten, Fund Thirty-eight, Fund Thirty-nine, and Fund Eighty. Those are the only funds that affect our property taxes and the levy that the board has. So when we look at Fund Ten, the general funds, we are looking at an approximate two point nine-two percent increase over last year, which is an approximate increase of one million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. What we're proposing is revenue coming in at forty-one million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and seventeen, and that's the same thing as our expenditures, so that's why we have the balanced budget. And the thing that we've broken down is instruction is at twenty million eight hundred and sixteen thousand three ninety-two. Support services, we're at fifteen million seven hundred and sixty thousand, and then non-program transaction, transactions are five million four hundred and six thousand dollars. So when we talk about non-program transactions, that's where we have to transfer funds from general fund over to the special education fund because we do not receive enough state aid from the state of Wisconsin to cover our costs in special education. So general fund needs to supplement that fund. When we talk about instruction, that is everything that's happening in the classroom that's related to students. So that's where our, our salaries and benefits for our teachers, our support staff, such as educational assistants, are coming out of, all the supplies, equipment that we're purchasing that happens in the, in the building. Support services, those are services that we incorporate into support student services, such as school psychologists, guidance counselors, that yes, you might say is directly tied to instruction, which we would all agree on. However, DPI has specifically pulled that and put that into support services. But ultimately, we are looking at a general fund increase over the previous year of approximately two point nine-two percents. Then we're going to look at special projects fund, and this is where we talk about Fund Twenty-One and Fund Twenty-seven, and primarily Fund Twenty-seven is where the special education funds are. And where, where we're at with that is about six million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars is that budget. So based on a pie graph, you'll see that how our revenues are coming in. So fifty-four percent of our revenues are from local revenues, which includes primarily property taxes and then student fees. Then you'll see that we receive thirty-seven percent of our revenue from the state, and that's what's coming through equalization aid and per pupil aid. Just one clarification is that the equalization aid does not, if we see that increase, as I talked about before, it just changes our property test, it does not give us the ability to collect more revenue to push to the expenditure side. And then how do we use our funds? So obviously, we are a people business, so seventy-seven percent of our budget is personnel. So that incorporates salaries and benefits, which would include the fringe benefits, health and dental insurance, and post-employment benefits. We have purch- purchase services, so we do now work with teachers on call, so we have substitute costs. We have transportation that we contract with Nelson's Bus Service, and utilities and contracts. And then you can see as that list goes on, from capital proj- capital objects to debt retirement, insurance, and transfers. And then on the expenditure side, as I had mentioned, we have seventy-seven percent of our budget going to personnel, and then fifteen percent goes to purchase services, and then three percent is actually going to debt and equipment and supplies. Debt service, something that's, we had briefly talked about in the superintendent's report, but we have two funds that fall in debt service, Fund Thirty-eight and Fund Thirty-nine. And specifically, if you look on pages seventeen through twenty of your annual meeting packet, you'll get a lot more detail than what the slides are going to show. Specifically, what I think is important to take away from those pages is we have a complete description of every issue that is still outstanding with the district, the outstanding principal, the outstanding interest, when that payment will be taken care of, and what's that actual debt issue was for. We are proposing a levy and a tax service fund of five million eight, five billion six hundred thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars for debt service. This first graph here is Fund Thirty-eight. So Fund Thirty-eight debt service is actually debt that the school board and the school district is able to issue without going to referendum, which means that any payments that we are associating through Fund Thirty-eight must come out of our Fund Ten balance, however, we have to report it separately. I do want to point out to you that we do have a spike for next year, and the reason that that spike is there is that back in December, the, the district purchased forty acres of property out in Cottage Grove. We were, we did not go to referendum for that purchase, so we did short-term borrow that. So what you're seeing here is that the principal is due next year, and depending on the next steps of the property that's for sale out in Cottage Grove, in addition to some other TID districts that are closing, the board will have to make a decision if they're going to either refinance that and spread that throughout, or take some additional funds to take care of that. But I do want to point out that with Fund Thirty-eight, that this graph goes to the end of the life, which is two thousand thirty-four, thirty-five. The next graph here is Fund Thirty-nine. So Fund Thirty-nine is actually referendum-approved debts, so as question one would actually be associated in Fund Thirty-nine if the referendum is approved and we go out for borrowing. Some of the things that I want to point out for you is that the, the last high school payment is done in May of two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and nineteen, and so that's why you're seeing the decrease from this year to next year. And I want to point out that we also have an outstanding debt for Fund Thirty-nine. We have forty-one million one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. After this fiscal year of making the five million dollars worth of payments, we will be down to thirty-six million five hundred and twenty-four thousand. But the other thing is that we only have eight years left on our debt service or our mortgage side of things when we talk about buildings. So as a district that continues to bill, it continues to grow, and we're coming out with another referendum question, question one about the fifty-seven million dollars, that's where fu- that would be placed in Fund Thirty-nine, and we are technically at eight years. And so to explain why that's only twenty-nine cents per thousand dollars is you're seeing that we have debt that's dropping off, and this is that visual that will show that. And specifically, that graph that I was, or that chart I was specifically talking about was on page nineteen that gives you the details of our debts. Food service fund has no impact on our levy. It is a self-sufficient fund, and so what we're looking at is we've had a very successful school nutrition program, and what we've been able to do this year is not increase school nutrition prices in addition to, in addition to extending our free lunches to our students that were qualified for reduced lunch for the school year to be able to assist. We're also upgrading a, a number of our lunchrooms and updating equipment. But you can see that we are projecting a revenue of one million three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and then expenditures at this point, we're expecting one million two hundred and twenty-six thousands. And then Fund Eighty, which is our community service fund, we do a lot of different things out of there. Primary that's coming out of our community service fund is our aquatic center that we have at the high school. We have an aquatic supervisor, we have a number of lifeguards, we offer classes to our communities. The other thing that we've been able to do over the last couple of years, offered some of summer recreation programming, such as summer camps. They have been primarily run through our athletic departments, but it's been opened up to everybody in the community, which allowed families that perhaps could not afford to be part of different types of camps to be part of programs through the school district. We've been able to fund our auditorium usage, that's also located at the high school. And then we have our partnerships with the city of Manona with the media, who provides taping of our board meetings, our athletic events, the annual meeting, and additional services to the district, both with Manona and Cottage Grove Cable. And then we do have our two SRO officers. In addition to that, being able to offer personnel for community outreach, which is our Director of Communications and Community Engagement. So we are looking at a revenue coming in at five hundred and thirty-one thousand seventy-five dollars, and expenditures going out at that same amount. And you'll see that we're not levying the entire amounts that we are eligible to in community service funds, because we do collect revenues through summer camps, swim lessons to be able to offset some of those other activities that are in Fund Eighty. So as a summary here, this is publications per DPI's requirements, so the first two columns are actual, actuals, so two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and then two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and then the third column is our budget. So you'll see that last year, that we had an increase of a seven point three-three percents increase in what we've spent in all of our funds over the previous year. Part of that was, was that one point six million dollars in land purchase, that obviously we do not need to do again in this fiscal year because we've already purchased that forty acres. So we are anticipating that our overall, all of our funds are going to decrease by a point two-six percents. So when we talk about the proposed property tax levy, as I mentioned before, we were looking at twenty-eight million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifteen, which equals a two point nine-four percent increase. You can see that general fund, which is our educational portion of our levy, is actually only increasing by six hundred thousand dollars. And when you think about a seven point nine percent increase in health insurance, that's over four hundred thousand dollars that eats up that pretty quickly. So our general, our referendum debt service is at five million nine hundred and forty-one thousand. Our non-referendum debt service is at six hundred and thirty-four thousand, and our community service fund is at three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we started with valuations, and we talked about how that will impact our mill rate, and we're going to pretty much conclude, conclude with this graph of mill rates. So last year, our mill rate was thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand dollars of property values, and right now, we're projecting that to be at thirteen dollars and twenty cents based on the information we have. I'm very confident in telling you that that number probably is going to go down even more based on numbers that are starting to be released to us. And speaking of that, the changes that are going to happen are going to be our final membership count, that third Friday certification of district property values, and then the total amount that we will receive in state aid, which we will not learn about until October fifteen. And then that's just the next steps that we'll go through. We were supposed to receive our property values on the first, they're just starting to come out today. On October fifteenth, we will see our final state aid calculation, and then on October twenty-fourth, the Board of Education will approve the final budget and set the final tax levy. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions that you may have. So there has been some additional, a little bit of additional funds that were put into the state's budget for that. But in addition to that, we have had seen enrollment increases. So when you do see enrollment increases, that also allows to bring additional state aid through. So like, for example, if we're only seeing an equalization value increase of three percents, but we have more, say, twenty-five or thirty students, that's allowing us to keep that versus if we were starting to decrease in enrollment, but our property values were going, we would see it, we would start seeing a decrease in our equalization aid. Yes? Yes, the per student, yep. Yes, the per student, yep. So there's two parts to that question. So the per pupil aid does not have any effect on our equalization, so we could receive two types of aid, equalization aid, which is the counterforce in our property tax versus per pupil. So the per pupil is a new thing that's been part of the state aid, so that, so we receive that, that's a set dollar amount per student that every school district in the state receives. However, when I talk about being a property-rich school district, that's what affects equalization aid. Yes? Sure. So the question is, is that we receive fifty-four percent in local, and the question is, what's the breakdown between property taxes and student fees that are coming in? I don't have the specific percentage, but what I can tell you is that we receive just shy of twenty-two million dollars in taxpayer, payer, taxes, but we receive three hundred and fifty thousand in student fees. So there's, it's tremendously on the property side. I, I think that's difficult to answer. I don't necessarily know exactly when that's happening, it just depends on how aggressive the village decides to be in potentially bringing in commercial. What the biggest difference between the city of Manona and the village, and even the town of Cottage Grove, is that the city of Manona has a lot more commercial base for taxes, and the village and town does not, where it's more residential. So, you know, obviously, if you're building three hundred, or four hundred, or five hundred thousand dollar houses, it takes a lot versus, you know, a Walmart's or a Shopko to add to that value. Yes? So the DOA, the Department of Administration, the Department of Revenue, that's right, as well as the population, they don't necessarily have any of those. A lot of times, what they're doing is, we've talked about even enrollments at our community meetings when we were talking about facilities, there are numbers that actually come from the U.S. Census Bureau, which are really inflated numbers, because they do want to make sure that every county is at least showing some growth, so they do not put out any numbers that say that in approximately twenty years, valuation in Cottage Grove is going to be this compared to Manona, because obviously, a lot of that is driven by local decisions that are happening in those municipalities. So that's a very good question. So for those that are not aware, so there's the lawsuits that some of the retail chains are talking about of how they're assessed, and so Walmart has filed suit with the city of Manona to lower their valuation, and there's been, come to an agreement. So how does that affect the school district? The school district is affected because we're going to see a valuation decrease from, to be able to, so that's going to impact our mill rates. So then ultimately, there's going to be some payback of taxes. Well, how school taxes work is, we'll have to pay that back, but then the following year, we're able to charge back that and spread that out. So that's where, so we will never have a net negative on our budget, it will just be in one fiscal year negative, and then the next year, we'll have to collect that money back from the remaining taxpayers in the, so you'll see an increase in your mill rates. One of the things that I didn't mention as well is, when you look at the mill rates, when we passed the two thousand and sixteen operational referendum, we were communicating to individuals that we were potentially anticipating a dollar thirty-seven per thousand dollars of property taxes. As you'll see, that the twenty, we went from twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents to thirteen eighty-nine. So we obviously projected on the high side, and we'd rather project on the high side. Obviously, there's a lot of different things that are happening. So when we talk about that twenty-nine cents and forty-six cents, that's the same thing that we're doing when we talk about that. We're trying to predict what our valuations are going to look like, what our enrollment's going to look like. So instead of coming in and saying, oh, we're only going to see a ten cent increase, and then ultimately find out you're getting a thirty cents, we are projecting it to be on the high side, and when we talk about that, it's the high side for maybe one or two years, but then tremendously decreasing. But going back to the dark source, so what we would see is that we'll artificially increase our mill rates for one year, and then it will come back down the following year. Yes? So we have not been given our numbers yet from the city of Manona. We're waiting on, once they get that agreement, then they will have to do the calculation to determine what that person each looks like for the, for the school district. Now, off the top of my head, Dan, do you recall? I, to be honest with you, I do not, I can reach back out to you, we can find that number out, but it's probably best to just even reach out to the city of Manona, since they're the ones that made the agreement. So if the referen, yep, so if the referendum is approved in November, the bond sales would not happen until the spring, unless there's ultimately starts to skyrocket interest, and then we have to try to move that process sooner, but obviously, the typical process would be later in spring. We would have already made our last payment for the high school, because that will be this coming spring. So when we talk about that twenty-nine cents, that's just one year, and then after that, those years decrease. The tricky part of it is, is that we have not sold those bonds, and we can structure those bonds when we sell those, to either be front-loaded with principal, and what we'll do is, we'll look at our existing debts and make sure that we fill that around so we're not seeing peaks and valleys. So what we do anticipate, that the twenty-nine cents would be the first two to three years of the bond payments, and then after that, it would decrease. What that decrease would look like, can't give you that exact answer, because we have not sold the bonds yet. Yep? I don't know off the top of my head. Obviously, we work with PMA that will be able to assist us with that. What I can tell you is that we've done our preliminary work. However, we can't proceed on any type of even having conversations with potential selling of bonds until the official referendum is passed, the canvassing happens, which is a week later. We have to go through a whole rating call with Moody's, or, and so it is about a two to three-month process with just everything, even though we might have laid all the groundwork out ahead of time. It's just the way that the system works for school districts to sell bonds, is that we have to do all these steps. But I'm more than happy to, if you actually come to one of our meetings next week, PMA will be there, and we can have some other additional conversations about what that potentially looks like with interest rates. Yes? If I did, I misspoke. So we are looking at a, yep, our budget's mill rate is at a two point nine, two point nine-four percent is what we're looking at for our levy increase. Two point nine-four. Yep. So if I did say a four, it was a miss, I misspoke. Nope, not a problem. So we do have a TID coming off in the city of Manona, and actually, that specific TID is the Pier One area. And so how TIDS work is, when a municipality sets in a TID, the property values that go in are frozen at the school district level, and then over the years that they're in the TID, it continues to grow, because obviously, there should be improvements that are being done. And then when that TID comes off, then we get where we were at with the base, and then any growth. So when we talk about the TID coming off, we're seeing an increase in our property values because we have not sold those for the last twenty years. Yes, that is correct. Yep. So myself or Dan, we, we can make a recommendation to the board. So right now, we are waiting to get the final numbers, but like you said, it will be well over a million dollars, and it's a million-dollar one-time, so our recommendation to the board would be obviously putting it into an expenditure that is either potentially paying off a land purchase or assisting with one-time purchases, but we have not made that recommendation, and we would make that recommendation to the board, and they would have to make that, approve that as a final decision. I don't think I have that document with me, I think it was just shy of two percent. Okay. For those that are not aware, the district owns some property, vacant lots across from Glacial Drummond. So if you're out to Glacial Drummond and Cottage Grove, and you're turning to come up Damascus Trail as you turn into GDS to the right before turning in off of Damascus World, there was vacant lots approximately ten. They were never subdivided, so it was classified as two lots when we sold them, but there could be potentially up to ten. The district went through an RFP process and selected, received the highest. They are still going through final approval, the goal is to be able to close by the end of October. So we're not able to disclose the selling price, because they have one more approval that they are waiting for, which they should receive within the next week. Yes, we were selling the entire, and that was actually recommended from the First Facilities Committee that the district put together from community, that we, we recognized that we did not need that land, that would land, that would not serve us for the purposes of building a school, nor of parking, or being able to have some type of athletic complex in that area. So the recommendation that was given to the board was to put those properties on the market. I mean, obviously, we're concerned about any road that we're on, there's always that possibility. Anytime that happens, obviously, we just have to communicate that, so there was no major concerns from the mismanager. Yes? Yes? I'm sorry, what page are you in? Yep, that's an excellent question, actually. So our levies run based on calendar year, so they follow the property taxes, and so property taxes come out in December, so our levy years are actually from January, December, but our fiscal year runs from July to June, so we actually, our payments are based on July to June, but yet the levy, so we receive sometimes, so we'll receive funds in the early part of the fiscal year, so in February, March, but those payments will not come out until November and December, so that's why you're seeing that. So that money sits in fund balance, because we had to levy it in that calendar year. That's an excellent question. Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Next item on the agenda is the quiz on the budget. So I hope you're all paying attention. Actually, we're now on to the business portion of the meeting, where we, whereas the community, we will adopt the various motions related to the tax levy and other expenditures of the district. If you would like to make a motion for any of the, actually, the proposed motions are in the booklet. If you would like to make a motion for any of these items, please state your name and address for the record. Each motion needs to be moved and seconded, and then we will have a vote. So the first one is the adoption of the tax levy. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the tax levy? John? Thousand. It's been moved and seconded, your, again, your name and address for the. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is aye, is the authorization of salaries for school board members. If I could have a motion for the authorization? Please? There's a motion, is there a second? Please? It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Please? Anybody remember how we got to thirty-one hundred dollars? As long as I've been, when I started the board, it was three thousand dollars, and that was in two thousand and eight, I believe. A couple of years ago, I think someone asked, you know, what salaries we, what increase we had given to the, to the staff, I'm sorry? To the staff increase, and I think the number at the time was, whatever percentage came to about a hundred dollars on three thousand. I believe that that's how we got there, but the, that number has not gone up or down very much, and it's gone up to a hundred dollars in the last couple, a couple, it's gone up eight hundred dollars in the last couple of years. Yes? I do not think so. Not to my knowledge. It's been three thousand dollars for forever, as far as I know. Comes out of the general fund. There are seven board members, if you want to calculate the amount in your head. Any other questions? Discussion? All right, hearing done, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? And any abstentions? It's noted that the school board members all abstained from that vote. Motion carries. Next is item J, reimbursement of school board member-related expenditures. These are expenses that we incur during the course of the year. They're primarily, the biggest one is attendance at the annual school board convention, which happens in January every year in Milwaukee.